We're excited that you're all here tonight and as we have our first meeting before we head into the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, Veterans' Day, and we are so happy and proud to have each one of you here. Now we'll call on Reverend Randy Perdue, who is with the Bridge Church in Wesley Chapel, to lead us in the invocation.
Commissioner Jones, thank you for, and I thank you and the Commissioners for allowing me to be here. If you would, let us bow our heads for prayer. Holy God, we thank you for this beautiful day. Lord, we thank you for this time that we can gather and for fellowship and to do the business that's before us. We thank you for the privilege of being the stewards that you call us to be, Lord. We thank you for these Commissioners, Lord, who have a lot on their plate. We know they're very busy, especially this time of year, but the work goes on. We thank you that we can be here and take part. We thank you for all the folks that make this county a wonderful place to live, work, and to serve. So, Lord, guide us. We know the days ahead are busy. We ask for peace and guidance as we get through tomorrow. But, Lord, we are your children, and here we are. Open our hearts and our minds for what you have for us not only today, but in the days ahead, and for this way, I ask in Christ's name. Amen. I would like to give you a quote. I like to do quotes. You may remember the famous Mother Teresa. She says, "I have found the paradox: if you love until it hurts, you will hurt no more than we love." Thank you.
And, of course, we, as a group, as a county, as our churches, and we need to continue to pray for all those in western North Carolina, too. That's a really tough situation still up there. Now, to do our pledge of allegiance, we will call on Terry Funderburke, and we do a little bit more with our veterans. Mr. Funderburke is a veteran of the U.S. Navy. He enlisted in 1987 and was sent to Great Lakes for basic training. After basic training, he was sent to Milligan, Tennessee, and then San Diego, California, for ASM training. In 1990, while aboard the USS Midway, Mr. Funderburke deployed to the Persian Gulf in response to the Iraqi seizure of Kuwait. They served as the flagship for Naval Air Forces in the Gulf and launched more than 3,000 combat missions with no losses. Their final mission was the evacuation of civilian personnel from Clark Air Force Base in the Philippines after the 20th century's largest eruption of nearby Mount Penatubo. Mr. Funderburke discharged from the Navy in 1991. After the Midway, returned to San Diego for decommission. Once again in the States, he was employed by Delta Airlines until 1993 and decided for a career change in the funeral industry. After becoming a licensed funeral director, he started his career with Hayworth Miller Funeral Home on January 1, 1996, and currently serves as manager of the Kenderton Chapel location in Advance. Thank you for your service, and thank you for being here today. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I guess we'll all stand and we'll face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Ethics and conflict disclosure? Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, statute 86, the Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I would ask each of you before the adoption of the agenda, if there's any actual perceived or potential conflicts of interest respect in a matter before, on the proposed agenda which come for a vote tonight. If so, please state at this time. Seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no potential actual or perceived conflicts of interest by the Board with regards to this agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, any discussion or changes? All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. Presentations. Mr. Barnett, Davie Respect Initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we've asked that the Davie Respect Initiative give a quick presentation of some of the efforts of some of their, I guess the appropriate word would be recipients. I know our municipal partners have had them come, but we do things a little bit better here at the county, so I'm going to turn it over to Julia to let you introduce what you've had over the last year.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Mr. Barnett, County Manager. Well, it's a delight to be here this evening to talk about one of my favorite topics, the Davie Respect Initiative. And it's hard to believe, this is our sixth year of running the initiative, and we started, gosh, our first celebration was 2018, and it is a challenge for young people, 12 to 21, to come up with an idea that will enhance respect in Davie County. Each quarter, up to three applicants are chosen to be ambassadors of respect, and they each win a beautiful hand-carved silver medallion, a Davie Respect Initiative t-shirt, and a $1,000 check. This is a letter we recently received from one of the parents of an ambassador. Dear DRI team, we wanted to express heartfelt gratitude for all you do for our young people. Since our daughter received her award and became an ambassador, we have seen remarkable growth. She's now more confident, proactive, and she's even trying out for the basketball team. DRI empowers youth with agency, teaching, and valuable life skills. Our family's experience has been overwhelmingly positive from the thoughtful interview process and insightful panelists to the celebration when Mayor Markland presented her the check. Not to mention the meaningful service activities with fellow ambassadors, like picking up trash and singing carols at Somerset Court Nursing Home. Thank you for caring. My husband and I truly believe DRI is inspiring young leaders. So, let's hear from those young leaders, because they are our true inspiration. And we have selected three ambassadors from each of the townships. We have Kaylee Lewis from Moxville, Silas Johnson from Kool-Amy, and we're going to start with Ava Brown. And I just have to say, yesterday, I had the privilege of being with Ava. She made 53 of the most beautiful bow case for Somerset Court Nursing Home, and she delivered them from 1:30 to 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon to each resident. And if you could have seen the smiles on their faces, it was just beautiful. We're going to start with Ava Brown. Thank you again for having us.
Okay, so, thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to be here tonight. It is an honor to speak to you a little bit more about Davie Respect. So, I'm going to start with my first project that I did with Davie Respect. It was called Pencils for Peers. And this project came about when I was sitting in a classroom, and I was kind of observing and seeing what I could do about some certain issues that go on in the classroom. And I realized that it's a prominent thing that kids stop class to ask the teacher for a pencil. So, with that being said, I dug into this a little deeper, and I realized that every pencil that they give out, the funds that buy those pencils, comes out of their own pocket. And I wanted to see what I could do about this to make just that aspect of teaching a little bit easier for them. So, with the help of the Davie Respect check, the award prize, and some donations from the community, I was able to collect and donate 21,000 pencils to each of our Davie County schools, ranging from elementary to high school. And that was an absolute success, and I've had a lot of positive feedback about that project. It taught me the power of thought and putting myself into the shoes of others to make a difference. My second project, which Julia just briefed about, is called Blooms of Hope, and this project has probably been my all-time favorite so far. I absolutely love flowers, anything to do with them. I love growing them, receiving them, buying them, you know? But I also love making people smile and giving back to those that are often forgotten in our community. So, along with these passions and combining it with research and some different digging into resources, I was able to arrange 53 jars of beautiful flowers for these residents of Somerset Nursing Home. And these residents were incredibly excited to receive these flowers, and I couldn't have been more happy to give them away, because it's truly rewarding to see these individuals that usually the only company they receive is the nurses that come and do daily checks on them. So, to see them so happy, so lit up, so overcome with emotion, was truly rewarding out of this project. Also, to see a new face. A new face was also a big aspect of this, because I went and personally delivered each of these to each resident. So, it kind of left a lasting impact on their mood and overall perspective of our generation. So, overall, Davie Respect has allowed me to utilize thought and put these thoughts into action with the help of the prize, of course, and the support of my Davie Respect teammates. And also using my own passion to benefit others and make the lives of others better overall. And also developing important interpersonal skills, planning, and teamwork to accomplish a goal. Thank you all so much.
I'm Kaylee, and for my Davie Respect project, I utilized my love for photography. So, I like taking pictures, and I like taking sports photography, but I really love taking pictures of nature. And so, what I decided to do for my first Davie Respect project is I decided to go around the county and take pictures through every different town of the county in order to promote respect for our environment. So, what I did is I went through each county, and I took pictures of all of them, and I wanted to promote respect, especially for the environment, but not only for the environment, for people, residents of Davie County. Because I feel like oftentimes, it's hard to really respect and grow to love a small town and a small community. And by being able to find the beauty in a small rural community, it let other people be able to see the beauty in Davie County as well as me. So, what I did is I made an Instagram page, and I uploaded all the pictures to this Instagram page. And so, I promoted this Instagram page so that other people from all around the county, and not only people in our county, but people outside of the county, could view my photographs of Davie County and could be able to learn to respect our environment more and be able to respect Davie County more as a whole. So, being with the Davie Respect Initiative, not only have I been able to do individual projects, but we also do multiple group projects. And one of my favorite things that we're able to do is we, a lot of the times, talk with, we meet with the Impact of the Piedmont, which is very helpful, and we, a lot of times, what we do is we throw festivities and different, like, holiday parties. So, one of my favorite ones that we've done is usually we always do a Christmas party. And it's almost, it's so rewarding whenever we do these Christmas parties, because Impact of the Piedmont, they help with housing people who have disabilities so that they can receive the help that they need, and it really helps everyone in our environment. So, whenever we help these people and we have these festivities for holiday parties, it's always so rewarding, because we get to not only interact with them, but we interact with their families, and you can just tell how much they, how much fun they're having and how it really impacts them as a whole. And that's probably one of my favorite projects that we do with the Davie Respect Initiative every year. It's so impactful, and I really love being a part of the Davie Respect Initiative. It has not only taught me to be more respectful to myself, but also to other people, and to spread respect to other people, and so that they show more respect to others as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and community members. My name is Silas Johnson, and I'm an ambassador of respect from Kool-Amy, North Carolina. I'm deeply honored to be able to speak to you today and would like to express my gratitude. To invite us to speak in this place where decisions that shape our county are made is huge, and I thank you for that, but I also thank you for your dedication to serving Davie County. Dedication to community service and inclusive decision-making is something that will make Davie County a better place, and it's as admirable as it is necessary for our future and our future growth. To grow, we must maintain strong leadership, even looking ahead, and as such, it's incredibly refreshing to know that the youth of our county are a beacon of hope for future generations. As a member of Davie County's 2023 delegation to Denver, Colorado, representing the Davie Respect Initiative, or the DRI, I saw firsthand the unimaginable wisdom, strength, and leadership held by young people and the other members of the community alike. Whether or not these individuals represented the Davie Respect Initiative specifically, they all had one thing in common: respect. This was demonstrated in a number of ways. All of the delegation members took feedback and improved upon the quality of the presentation as one, and the delegation also engaged in meaningful youth and leadership, community involvement events in Denver. It was not only, the trip was not only a meaningful youth and community service event for us to experience, it also provided the foundation for meaningful friendships to form and for connections and relationships to occur through the shared roots of respect from individuals in Davie County. And the youth involvement demonstrated by the delegation was, of course, what represented Davie County and led to us becoming an All-America county. But the youth involvement would never have occurred without, would never have occurred without the underlying principle of respect. There are a variety of young people in our county who feel that they want to get involved and want to feel that they're part of, want to feel that they're part of a team. For the longest time, I was one of those kids, and applying to the Davie Respect Initiative was really what opened me up to a world of possibilities. As an ambassador, I was immediately connected with a network of people who wanted to do good to the community, and this team meant and still means so much to me. Nothing made me more proud in my entire life so far than when it was announced that Davie County had received the All-America City Award. And when the Davie Respect, what the Davie Respect Initiative team has done is spread ripples of respect throughout Davie County that no doubt committed to that and helped that occur and formed the foundations of so many young people's futures. Being a part of DRI for me means belonging to something bigger than myself, a team where every connection is filled with warmth and purpose. There's an incredible sense of unity, knowing we're all working together to make a real difference, and it fills me with pride and hope for the future. But what I've described isn't only what the Davie Respect Initiative means to me, or even to the countless ambassadors who I'm sure might agree. It is a promise to and for our future. The leaders who stand with integrity, creators who dream fearlessly, and hard workers who are dedicated to tomorrow, and the ambassadors who live with respect are a living testament to what is possible when a community invests its heart in the next generation. And as these ripples of respect continue to spread, they become waves of change, lifting us all toward a hopeful horizon. Thank you.
We wanted to get a quick picture with our young folks. Can, before we do that, Ms. Julia, I, we're going to, I'm going to kind of take a little bit of a, an idea to have Karen get in touch with you. We don't want to talk about how your initiative is funded right now, but I think based on what we've heard here, that this is just outstanding, that the county, I know the municipalities have been involved, but the county would like to be involved, too. And I think probably we would like to have you guys back here on a quarterly basis, or some level you and Karen can come up with where we can see these leaders and have them on our live stream, and so that the people of Davie County can see the great things that are going on, okay? So, we'll talk about that. I'll get Karen to get in touch with you, and then I think, I think, Commissioners, we really want to be a part of this, more than we probably have been, so. Okay. Photo. No, no, this is Commissioner. I'm not elected.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we've had one individual sign up for public comment, Ms. Julie Whitaker. Julie has been here before, so I will not go, I will not go over the rules with her, but she wants to talk about Davie Community Conversation on Suicide.
Good evening. Thank you so much. To foster understanding and quell the stigma surrounding the topic of suicide, Partners Health Management has been facilitating community conversations regarding suicide. Participation is free and open to the public. Any interested person is welcome to attend. The program includes some facts about suicide, videos from a neighboring county regarding their issue, and the initiatives they use to slow the rate of suicides. The discussion facilitator will be Tiffany Hall, a licensed clinical social worker and adjunct professor of social work at UNC Greensboro. She also works with the Salisbury Veterans Suicide Prevention Team. In addition, Ms. Hall is trained to teach calm counsel on access to lethal means, and she's a proud supporter of the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. We welcome folks who have experienced suicide or who are concerned about suicide. The atmosphere will be understanding and nonjudgmental, and there will be support for those who may be overwhelmed by the discussion. Please join us to consider this important topic and add your voice to our understanding and efforts to reduce deaths by suicide. The next conversation will be on Saturday, November the 9th, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. in the History Room of the Davie County Public Library at 371 North Main Street here in Moxville, and it's hosted by the Partners Davie Community Collaborative, the county's committee to Partners Health Management. I'm wearing a red string tonight, and your flyer has a red string on it. Turns out that the red string symbolizes suicide prevention and awareness, representing connection and support for all. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Finney, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Poindexter, any discussion?
I have a comment.
Please.
So, along with this consent agenda tonight is a budget amendment that will allow us to add positions to Davie County EMS so that our supervisors may come off the road of a regular ambulance and be in a QRV. This is something that I have asked for for many, many years and have frankly even had verbal altercations regarding the same. So, I want to take this opportunity to thank Brian for making this happen for EMS. Joseph is here, and I think I might be the only person a little happier than he is for this to happen. I think this is a wonderful tool that our EMS can utilize, especially now that we have a lot of young medics and young EMTs that an experienced senior paramedic can be on a QRV and assist them on calls, and a multitude of services that this is going to provide for our county. So, thank you, Joseph, for persevering and continuing to ask for this year after year. And again, Brian, thank you for finding a way to make this happen.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, I have three things. Number one, excuse me, last week, for Halloween, we again hosted an event at the Brock Gymnasium through our Recreation and Parks Department. As part of that event, we had 633 people go through the facility, so we were happy to see that. Tomorrow is an important day in our country. It is Election Day. Davie County has already shown out in quite large numbers for the early vote. We have about 33,000 registered voters in Davie County and slightly more than 20,000 participated in early voting. So, if you are looking to go out tomorrow, and we strongly encourage you to exercise your right to do so, we have locations all over the county that will be open from early morning until 7:00 or 7:30, sometime in the evening. So, you have all day, and there are fewer people left to vote, so it should be easy to get in and out. So, we hope that everybody, again, exercises their right tomorrow on Election Day. And then finally, it is November, and this next Monday is Veterans' Day, and we know how important our veterans are to Davie County, but we want to remind everybody that we will and that we are having Operation Green Light to show our support for our veterans throughout the county. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We have one item of old business, Schedule of Values. Do we just, do we need to hear from Jamin on that, or are we good to go?
I think based on our two previous meetings and our work session, I think we are good to go unless you have any specific questions of our tax administrator.
Questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Schedule of Values.
Mr. Schof, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, any other discussion? All in favor? All right, that is approved. Do we have any other new business? Commissioners' comments? Mr. Poindexter?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'd like to offer thanks and congratulations to the Respect Initiative representatives that were here, even though they're already gone, but it's wonderful to see young folks involved in the operations of the county. Y'all remember tomorrow, to get out and vote early, vote often, and we'll see you then.
Ms. Schof?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I was really, that Davie Respect Initiative very, meant a lot to me, because being a former educator, it's just great to see kids at that age make such valuable contributions to society, and it just resonated, one of the quotes by the young man, being part of something that's bigger than yourself, and we ought to strive to do that ourselves. And we ought to strive to do that ourselves, and we ought to strive to teach our younger people to buy into that. Especially in light of looking around and what we see in western North Carolina, there's something that's larger than something insignificant in your life that you can make a difference in. Also, I think with tomorrow coming up and all the acrimony that goes with elections and the competition between candidates, et cetera, let's be in prayer that regardless of what happens, that we will respect our fellow man, fellow woman for what happens, and we can move on and respectfully agree to disagree and support each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schof. Mr. Renninger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I appreciate everyone coming out. The Davie Respect Initiative, that was very impressive. The three speakers did an excellent job, and I look forward to seeing if we can support that movement a little more. That would be good. Wish everyone Happy Thanksgiving. The next time we see you, Thanksgiving will have passed. As has been stated, tomorrow is Election Day. Whatever your political persuasion, please vote. Right has been paid for by blood, so don't squander your right, please. And with that, I look forward to seeing you next month.
Ms. Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will also say thank you to Julia and her team and the DRI ambassadors for being here with us tonight and for their presentations and what they continue to do. Randy, thank you for being here with us and sharing that opening prayer. Veterans Day is next Monday. As already has been discussed, on Thursdays, there are two different celebrations at the Senior Center honoring our veterans. Next Monday, eating funeral services, having a free picnic for all veterans and their families. So we hope that you all will take advantage of that for all of those celebrations and let, give the community an opportunity to thank you for all that you've done to preserve the rights of our country. And again, everybody, go vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Before you jump into a closed session, I'd like to take one quick second. I want to recognize our county clerk, Karen Logan. I know she's going to kill me for doing this, but since we got a short meeting, I think I can slide it in there. Karen completed her clerk certification. Much workers you had to do. I almost want to say degree. But as part of, Karen came aboard a year and a half ago, and as part of her becoming our county clerk, she had to go through a long, vigorous process. And last week, she, two weeks ago, really, she completed that. So I want to take a second and just recognize her for achieving that.
Thank you for everything you do for us, Karen. You go above and beyond daily.
Yes, you do. And we will have a nice photo op at next month's meeting, okay? We've got something. Thanks, guys. I will say this to, on top of what Brian has already said about the election tomorrow. Davie County has already voted sixty-two percent approximately of its registered voters, which is outstanding. I've been doing this a long time, and the, Michael, the largest turnout I can remember is about seventy-two percent. And so we will top that tomorrow. And so I applaud both parties and independents who have done the job of getting the vote out. It has worked, and Davie County has done its part, but if you hadn't voted, go vote tomorrow. Thank you for being a part of what makes Davie, mostly staff here now. Thank you for being a part of what makes Davie County such a great place to live, to run a business, and to raise a family. You are what makes, what makes this place work, and we thank you for it. Now, Ed tells me I've got to read all this, so I've got to read two items for closed session, and then we're going to go into closed session. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or two, the amount of compensation or other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract. Item B, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Mr. Renninger, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? We are now in closed session. We will be back shortly, hopefully. All right. Do I have a motion to go back into open session? Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? Do I have a motion? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second? Ms. Schof got it in. Anything else? All right, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.